And we are ready to start our Board of County Commissioners special meeting for August 14th. We're going to review the Douglas County Cares Act, round one, draft reimbursements and direct aid plan. We will take public comment, since this is a regular agenda item. But I think probably it'd be good to start with a bit of an overview from Sarah, if that's what you were thinking, Sarah, before we jump into that public comment.
Okay. I'm sharing my screen. This isn't... We have a summary overview of where we are. Do, do, do. Come on. Ah! There we go. This is our summary review sheet. This is our summary sheet that shows all of the reimbursements, the direct aid requests from cities, and the county. RSF1. We did not create a new column from Wednesday to today, but you can see last week for RSF1, we were at 1.2 million, now we're at 3.4. And then... Few changes to RSF2 and 3. 3 is still up, because we moved a couple of projects that were in RSF1, sort of inappropriately to RSF3. And then education should be this... We'll have changed slightly, based off of what we did to KU, or with their applications. So now I'm going to go to the revisions, and I think the way Brooke lined this out was really helpful. She shows here what the cuts were proposed, in column D here, and then if there were additional cuts taken on the 12th. So all of these are additive. So we walked into the 8/12 meeting with a $200,000 cut for Douglas County, and then we added an additional $100,000 cut for nursing home long-term care support. Does that make sense, commissioners? And then you can see here the changes to the City of Lawrence Direct Aid Plan. Woo! That... Why did that go down so fast? The top... At the top of the City of Lawrence Direct Aid Plan, we show what we had reduced walking into the 8/12 meeting, and then column E shows what additional reductions were taken. Same with Udora. Health and medical. Does this make sense? Okay, sorry. This should be in the CRF allocation spreadsheet. It's the second tab, revised proposals.
It's the second spreadsheet of what she sent. Just give us a second.
Yeah. All right. So then, we... So inside City of Udora Direct Aid Plan, we had taken initial reduction of $200,000 coming into the meeting. At the meeting, we took an additional $50,000 reduction, and then we reduced their City of Udora transfer for budgeted fire expenses. With RSF2, health and medical, we reduced both Lawrence Douglas County Public Health and Burt Nash Mental Health Center by what we believe. We have pretty solid assurance that this is the amount of funds they will receive from the state in round two. And I have confirmed that with Patrick Schmitz at Burt Nash. Had an exchange with him yesterday, that he was comfortable that the Community Mental Health Center system would go that route, and that they will receive that $262,750 from the state. He's gonna... We're going to take that out of their business interruption program. And then, in RSF3, for Housing and Human Services, we started the day with a reduction in the motel voucher program for individuals and families experiencing homelessness, and then we added reductions for the United Way School Supply Program and the Udora Giving Garden Program. And then, as of Wednesday, the only reduction in RSF4, at the end of that meeting, was to the campus cupboard at KU, which would have paid for paid staffing for the campus cupboard. The cupboard will still be there, and hopefully we'll be able to somehow be staffed with volunteers. So we have, in total, reallocated 2.9 million to RSF1. And then I'm going to show you where we're at with RSF1. And I'm going to say, for the most part, I think we've done it, tried to do a pretty good job of getting programs cleaned up, but I know that there's probably still a little bit of work here and there of stuff that was on a summary sheet that may not be there anymore. All right. You guys see this? So here are... Here is RSF1 as it stands today. I believe Brooke is showing in red here. Brooke, I think the red... Can you indicate what the red indicates? I think it was just things that you... Because it's not everything that new that we added back in, is it?
No, Sarah. I had highlighted some of the items red as we were going through them during the last meeting, and I just forgot to take it off.
Okay. So no one should read anything into the red font on the side of... So, the On Guard, ISO Guard Hand Sanitizer Project was reduced moving into the Wednesday meeting. So 80,000 remains on it. The Duane Peaslee Technical Training Center Project was reduced from 400 to 200. We're still showing here, and I think probably Brooke, what I'll probably have you do is move the three restaurants down below, now that we've taken them out. But as you can see here, there's no money for... On those, they've been moved to group funding. The Art Center Project still sits at 32175. We had a lot of exchange yesterday with both Margaret Morris and Steve Novak and Jim Ogle about the Freedom's Frontier piece. They're... So the only thing Freedom's Frontier was being paid for in this request was for reimbursement related to the app and the platform that they're using, so not really staffing, I believe. Brooke, is that correct, from what you have?
Sarah, I believe that... Is that the 32175 request?
Yeah.
Corey? Yeah, I believe that there is staffing costs.
There are some staffing, but I don't think it was for Freedom's Frontier. From what... And it was in Daviana's...
Bear with me here, let me just check.
Two. But I know that... I think there will be another reduction to this program, because we asked them then to go back in and prorate what Douglas County's share of that app platform would be. For those folks that know, Freedom's Frontier National Heritage Area has a 41-county service area. So initially, what was in this recommendation was us reimbursing for the entire app. And so my understanding is that Jim Ogle's going to get us the number this morning, hopefully soon.
Is this the same app that came up in our budget that he was talking about?
Boy, you're asking me lots of good questions. I think it is. But let me see if I can get into the request a little deeper.
Because in the budget, he asked for $5,000 for that app, and said that that was Douglas County's portion.
I feel pretty confident that we'll get a revised number down here pretty quickly.
I would just say, I mean, I think that's entirely fair, that Douglas County shouldn't bear the entire cost. But I do think that that app is pretty key to the future of Freedom's Frontier, and given the current circumstances, that moving to that technology will be really important to keep those sites.
Yeah, I think it's important, too. I just, I don't want it to exceed what he had asked us for, you know, what they considered the Douglas County portion of it in the budget, so.
I hope that we will hear from him soon, as to that amount, and ask those questions. Then we added these programs for the Lawrence Restaurant Association. Right now, it's... I had a conversation yesterday with Emily Peterson about this request, that my understanding is the commission wants to... This is more than just PPE. It would be sanitation, protective health measures, so barriers, screens, things like that. Some business interruption, perhaps, but not massive patio renovations, and those types of things. So here's what the conversation I had with both Sally Zagory with Downtown Lawrence and with Emily. For purposes of what we need to submit to the state, we need a... You all become very familiar with the program outlines on these spreadsheets. My recommendation was that county staff would revise those program drafts, keep them as specific as we need to, to make sure that we have the funding, but not so specific that we feel like we have to work out every million details before we turn this in. And then I've asked each of those organizations to begin working on their own more in-depth detail of how those funds would be distributed, questions that they might have for us in terms of prioritization and priorities. And then that can be brought back to the commission, hopefully within like a week or so, you know, at least initial thoughts, just so the commission can have some confidence as to how the program will be structured. But we, I think both Brooke and I feel pretty confident the state doesn't need an entire program outline with applications and all that jazz at this point, for what we have to turn into the state. So I know, I don't think I got this one done last night, but I know I did the one for the DLI Small Business Grants. Brooke, I sent that to you. Is that in this document? It is. All right. So I'm going to go to it and just kind of show you as an example.
Sarah, I added it after the RSF1 summary tab, so it's just right next to it.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry.
Nope.
I didn't have time to link it and...
Link it all in, totally get it. So it is...
Oh. If you've had that open since last night...
Probably not. Okay, so I'll...
Sorry.
Yep, you're fine. Which file should I open, Brooke?
Do the one in the 8/14 meeting.
So...
Go ahead.
While we're waiting for it to load up. So question on that. So now we're calling it a Small Business Grants program, when actually, in the beginning, it was a program for retail.
I think I clarified it as retail.
Did you?
Yeah. Because that's... They called it Small Business Grant, when they submitted their original program to us.
Because I think we need to make that distinction.
Yes.
Otherwise, it's not gonna...
Hospitality Restaurants and Bars across Douglas County.
So we changed it.
Okay.
Well, so, on the LRA, it is intended to be hospitality restaurants and... Right?
Yeah, sorry. I was looking at the DLI one that says...
Yeah, I have not updated the Lawrence Restaurant Association tab, Nancy.
Oh, wait.
I have not gotten it done yet.
Never mind. So the DLI one is talking about Lawrence Restaurant Association. This sounds confusing.
It shouldn't. Let me see if I... So here is the Downtown Lawrence.
Okay, I see the clarification there.
So it's just right here, after the RSF1 summary. And I just called it Small Business Reimbursement Grants. You can call it what you want. And then I kept just one sentence here. "DLI plans to implement a small business grant program for retail businesses in Douglas County to reimburse the costs of PPE, sanitation, public health protective measures, and business interruption." Doesn't have to be for all of those at this point, but I think at this point, leaving it in there as that, and structured in that way, then they can bring something back to us for that program. But I made it clear that it's for retail businesses in Douglas County.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's different than what they submitted to us. Those are my edits.
And DLI is still willing to be the umbrella organization for that?
Yeah, so I had a great conversation with Sally yesterday. I think she was really honored that the commission asked them to do this, and that they are absolutely excited about running this program. You know, they're going to have a small administrative fee, so you see, I put the 5% administrative fee from inside that, so then the amount of grants would be 427,500. You know, and I shared with her the commission's emphasis on small, locally-owned businesses, and... Boy, you had three things, and I always forget what they all... I know that the last one is, oh, must be available countywide, so we put countywide in the title, and that we want them to apply for round two funding. And I think they're going to figure out how to word that. Some folks may not be eligible for round two funding, but I think just as long as the application process gives some sort of information, and strongly encourages folks to keep continuing to pursue additional funding.
I'm glad you said that, because I did get a call yesterday from someone who said, "So are we not eligible for..." It was an LRA-related call, and "are we not eligible for this fund unless we..." Like, is it mandatory that there must be a round two application in for us to get, to be eligible for this local dollar? And there was some confusion. I kind of thought, I remembered Patrick talking about it, and then it's on the screen, as though it is a mandatory requirement, that anyone who goes for LRA money must also have an application in for... So I think we need to clarify that, because folks are a little bit confused. And I would submit that we're adding one more barrier to folks if we say they must do something in order to be eligible for the local dollars, because some of these will be such small requests that they won't necessarily need to go to round two. So do we want to just strongly encourage, or are we saying it's a mandatory application?
I think that's up to the commission.
Yeah. So, I want to think about Nancy's questions a little bit, because that's good, but there were also things that triggered for me, so saying it's available Douglas County-wide, but we have a Udora program. Right? So...
And that was one of my questions. Do you want me to exclude Udora? Now, they had asked, since we have massive... Since we've reduced the Udora program, do you want to say they are ineligible from the rest of the program? Or not? And I don't... And honestly, we can figure some of this out now, but this isn't... This is not necessarily vital to how we... What we turn into the state.
Right.
But we certainly can have the conversation.
Okay. And then the other question I had, because we had some discussion about this on Wednesday night, was, did they have to apply for Douglas, for these Douglas County Cares Act round one funds in order to be eligible for those funds? Right? Because we had this conversation about not creating, they didn't apply the first time, you know, and they missed that deadline. Were we creating a whole nother grant process? I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just remembered that part of our conversation.
It was not my assumption that they had to have applied the first time through our Douglas County round one funding, because many of them may have planned to be part of the LRA program and not submit an individual application. And so I would say that that's probably not fair at this point. So this is a whole new... Yep, you got to apply again.
I think we got to put some separation, in my mind at least, between the LRA program and the DLI program, the Downtown, the retail program and the restaurant. I think those are different things.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
So, and like you said, we don't have to figure it all out here. You know, it might be good to bring some of those people who applied in and talk to it, you know, or, I don't know. That's a bad... Maybe that's a bad idea, but, yeah.
As I've heard some of the leadership talk about, at least on the LRA side of things, there's a way to look at kind of a scalable, or almost a formula, like the same as the school formula, the per pupil, in terms of the purchase of masks, or whatever. There's some costs that are the same across the board, no matter whether you're small or large, but you may need just a few versus many. There may be like an easy formula that they can offer proportionate dollars to each restaurant or business, you know, related business that wants to participate, without having a massive process to get that right off the bat. But I think some of these, like if we're talking about costs of adaptation to socially distance, I mean, those, some of those are pretty pricey and complicated.
Right.
So I think they're... I think we do need to talk to the leadership to make sure that there's a good, equitable process, and I have, and I think Sarah has, in terms of the equitable sharing of this money and distribution in a way that really recognizes all the nuances of trying to be fair. I think they're working on that.
Yeah, that would be my anticipation, is that they would come back to us.
Yeah.
Hopefully, within a week or so, maybe.
Yeah.
Great to keep moving on this, with at least their judicial outline, and maybe some questions for us. You know, "Hey, what were you thinking on this?" Or, "Is the commission have a preference on that?" You know? And so to bring back sort of their proposal for how they would run that grant program.
Yeah.
And for each of them, LRA and DLI, and how they would like to structure it. And I know, like on my conversation with Sally Zagory with Downtown Lawrence, you know, she said one of the things that surprisingly comes up is, "What's your definition of retail?" You know, and the example she used is, you know, "The Journal World sells papers. Is that a retail business?" You know, so I think they will probably... I said, "Well, you're going to know better than us how you would suggest defining retail." And so, you know, I think it's always good for you to bring us a recommendation, but talk through it. And then those are the kinds of things you can consider. I think the commission knows really well, is once you start down a rabbit hole, there's always a million little details on those kinds of things. But the emphasis on small and local. And, you know, and then the question here, I would say, is, in terms of countywide, how do you feel about Udora in this process? And I... Brooke, maybe you can remind me, what is the Udora Small Business Program total now?
I believe it's 119,000.
That sounds right.
I'll confirm that.
And that was one of the questions in the follow-up document from Udora, asking if they would be allowed to apply.
Well, the problem is, we don't know yet...
Other structure.
Who the, you know, what the needs are. We just know there are huge needs. You know, it was interesting that included in our packet was the news that Udora just got a quarter million dollars of a block grant for economic development. So, I mean, I think they've... I'll tell you what, Udora is amazing. They are getting it. They go after stuff and they get it. So they're, they are on top of their extra-dollar applications from every source they can find. So they're aggressively looking for some of these dollars, and I think we haven't seen that from the other communities, either for lack of understanding that the process, or just lack of wanting to, you know...
I do think the CDBG program, the City of Lawrence was prohibited from applying for that program.
Yeah, oh, and I'm not saying... I'm speaking more to the smaller communities.
Right.
Okay, no.
So my question is, I know that DLI is going to be managing that, and LRA is going to be managing their portion, but since this is countywide, can we look at a way of changing those names so people understand that it isn't exclusive to members of those two organizations?
Yeah.
And with that in mind, I mean, let's just say we said Douglas County Restaurants, or something, Douglas County Hospitality, or something.
That's why I changed.
And then Douglas County Business, or whatever we could recall.
Yeah, that's why I tried to name it Douglas County Small Business.
Okay, sorry. I'm still looking at my... I should just look up there. But then, do we want to consider rolling the Udora dollars into that, instead of saying, "Here's a Douglas County plan, but it excludes Udora"? I mean, if it's not going to be called a Douglas County Small Business Plan, maybe we can just roll the Udora municipal dollars into this? Just a thought. Because I think it's going to be very awkward if you say, "Here's a Douglas County plan, but it excludes Udora."
Well, they will rightly be on it, you know.
But just, I'm just thinking out loud.
No, no, I get that. I think, on the one hand, awarding them dollars that, you know, they were aggressive enough to ask for them, and they asked for it a lot. This, what they have now represents quite a cut from what they wanted, but they also then have the opportunity to have their own special dollars, plus access to Douglas County dollars, plus access to round two dollars. I mean, it's just, there's so many different pots to pull from, so I don't know. I...
And maybe we don't need to do anything. I mean, I, too, was very impressed that they took it upon themselves to create it, that they thought of creating a small business grant for their community, and...
I think so. I, yeah, I don't necessarily want to punish them for getting, making the most of the process.
So we can just leave it as is? That's fine with me.
Yeah, the detail...
No exclusion, no...
And maybe, maybe we can, that can just be one of the calculations as DLI is working through the program over the next month or two, as money is being distributed, to make sure that there's, you know, that Baldwin and LaCompton and Lawrence, I mean, that everyone really is, that the most aggressive communities aren't always getting the lion's share, that we really do look for those businesses and communities that aren't necessarily used to asking, you know, going through these processes. So I think, I think if we can just get the equity, the fair distribution idea solidified. I do know, and this may not be the moment to bring it up, but just the, included in the packet is, as we're talking about Udora, the recognition that the one thing that he, the fellow who was in charge of all of these applications, the one, one of the most important thing that he needed to ask for and neglected to ask for was the PPE for the fire folks, to the tune of 50,000. So I think...
Well, and...
I don't know what we do with that, but that certainly rises above the priority of the...
So this is the constant problem I feel like I'm having with the Cares Act. You know, I have not had time to go in and find out, really, is that just for Udora? Because that asked... Because that ask seems really high for PPE for one small volunteer-based fire service. I know initially, City of Lawrence, LDCFM, did a lot of work to distribute PPE to township fire departments. They, they have asked for additional funds to help with that. I'm not sure if they were planning on covering the townships. We do have a large pot of.
This was a city of Udora request.
They, they have a PPE request for $16,500 for firefighters and EMS.
Correct.
I'm just remembering what I read in the, one of the correspondence, or one of the.
Yes.
So I'm sorry, go ahead.
But they do, initially, LDCFM, because of their role with Emergency Medical Services, gave PPE to small cities and townships for this work. I don't know if their plan was to continue that or with their ask. I also know that we have a stockpile that we put in RSF 2 for PPE. And I just feel like I haven't had time to really, that number seems real high to me at this point, to make sure, and I, and literally, you know, we had a conversation, I got a call yesterday from Prairie Moon School. You know, so, you know, this process will never end. And, 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 and I, I certainly am, if we, you know, we want to reconsider things that are important and valid until, if we can, but I also, I don't know how, I feel like then we would need to go back to a couple other people and ask, like, do you want to submit something?
Yeah. Well, as, on the, so, on that kind of last minute, begging on his neighbor's request for that, I think as long as we know that there's, there will be stockpiles of PPE thanks to Unified Command's effort and Lawrence Fire and Medical to help supply the smaller towns, hopefully. I mean, I think, yeah, I, I get that. And I, and I'm not, I, I'm not willing, I think, to take Udora's request for economic support down to zero. I think it's been cut a lot already, and they, they took a lot of initiative, and that's worth something.
I want to reward the initiative, to be honest. And I don't, the more I think about it, just hear the discussion, it seems to me, it's not a big number anymore. It was a big number to start with, and so I, I guess I would be in favor of including them. You know, I'm sharing this because I know we're going to be thinking about it more, and, but as they think about it, I want them to include that. I, I think it would be confusing to say it's everybody in Douglas County except Udora, because Udora did something we would have liked every community to do.
I agree.
That doesn't make any sense to me, so.
Yeah, correct.
Well put.
So this template here of how we sort of changed, and commissioners can flip back and forth between the tab of what the DLI request looked like initially and where it's at now. And, and I did have conversations with Downtown Lawrence about, you know, the marketing for this is the Douglas County, countywide, small business COVID grants, you know, administered by DLI. It's, and it's not necessarily the Downtown Lawrence. And, and they, they understand that, they appreciate that, they, I think their understanding of, of small, local retail businesses is helpful, whether you're on Mass Street or if you're on, it's Main Street, right, in Udora? That's their kind of main.
Well, church and main, yeah.
Church, it's true, yeah. So, so for, or church.
And then main, yeah.
Right. I knew there was some, okay, sorry, I knew there was a main, something on Main Street.
Udora geography lesson.
So I think that, I think that that will be helpful, and she was certainly eager to, and willing to help out in that regard. So what, what I would plan to do today, and what I told Emily I would do, was do something similar to this, to the LRA request. Say, you know, Douglas County Restaurant, you know, Restaurant COVID-19 Grant Program. It will cover these things and keep, and turn it into the state. And then they will work on drafting what that program, fleshing it out, really putting in the details, how we want it structured and specific, and then bring that back to us separately.
Is, is it in, on the, on the DLI one, is it important to say rather than small, or small business slash retail, so that retail is in there in the title of it?
I can certainly add that.
I just think in the publication of the program, we need to say retail in there, so we start with that as the foundation. And then on the, on the LRA one, the Douglas County, I, I wonder if we need to say hospitality industry rather than just restaurant, or restaurant slash hospitality, so that it's clear that it's not just restaurants?
I'd be glad to do that.
Because I, I want to make clear, I think it's important, we're allowing bars to, I mean, they have some of the highest PPE needs around to keep us all safe. I would think it's important for those businesses to be eligible.
And I'm just going to take PPE out of the title, so it's not just. The Douglas County Hospitality COVID Assistance Program. I mean, and honestly, this can all change. The name of the program does not, you know, we, you, I think, getting their feedback, and, and that can all be modified after this. It's really about what do we, the broad outlines of what we wanted to cover to what we submit to the state. Yeah.
But it, it.
Right.
The more we can make clear now.
Yep, that's great.
Rather than edit out later.
I just don't want anyone to get too married to it if something can come up, comes up later that, that they want to modify it.
So I, I just want to be clear on something, because I had several questions yesterday, just because of the way it's, it's been present, because the way it's presented to us, just for our working purposes, that there's programs that are recommended and not recommended. But now that we've created these group fundings, that even the programs that weren't recommended because they didn't fit within the budget, or for, for whatever reason, the groups decided not to fund those, they're now eligible.
Yes.
There is no.
Clean slate, start over.
Yeah, so it's.
New program.
Yes, because the way some things were presented, people read the article and, and came back to me, and they're like, so, they're still, I think they quoted you Winners and Losers, and they wanted the list of winners and losers, and it's like, there isn't a list of winners and losers. We're opening this up to, to everyone. So I just want to make sure that that's clear and understood, and that hopefully that will get communicated to the public.
Yeah, my, that would be my hope as well, and we're stating it here in a public meeting, that the intent is, is that we are creating a new program that will be eligible to countywide to, to, but who those exact recipients are will not be determined probably for several weeks, maybe a month, in time for those organizations to develop applications, to have them reviewed, proper documentation submitted, and recommendations made.
Okay, so will the Explore Lawrence Hotel Aid Program and Responsible Tourism be countywide also?
We can certainly direct that to be so, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's fair. I think Explore Lawrence, despite its name, has done a nice job of, of looking at, especially in Baldwin City, the, the really remarkable, and, and LaCompton.
I just want to make sure that.
They've done a nice job of being, you know, inclusive, but that's an important point. Thanks, Michelle.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that they'll do a wonderful job with that, but sometimes people just see the name and they immediately, they're like, oh, we aren't included.
So I'm just going to put in here, just to sort of indicate our desire on this, just going to put countywide.
Well, and part of the reason I think it's important that we do this this morning is so that when maybe a story appears in the paper tomorrow, it's, that's the way people are going to see it presented, is that it's.
Yeah.
Everything is for the entire county and, and not just targeting the city of Lawrence.
Just for purposes of what we're looking at here, and I know, Brooke, I'm, I'm going to hide these rows. I do not have my mouse, which makes life very difficult when you're trying to right-click. Yeah, it's not going to work.
We'll be okay.
All right, nevermind, okay. All right, so are, where would you like to go next?
So, Sarah, is there more of a review? I mean, Commissioner, do we want to, do we have comments that we want to do before we take public comment?
Well.
Yeah.
There's a big one hanging out there.
Oh, yeah, so would you like?
The KU Dining, $450,000 is, is funded, but I think the question is, did they accept the, the stipulation that that was actually going to be a stimulus program using local vendors, local restaurants, rather than, rather than strictly the KU Dining Hall and Cisco Food and all of that, so.
So I had a conversation with Julie Murray last night, and, and I think this is really a victim of our timing. Students are already moving into scholarships halls, they've already been told that they will be using KU Dining. There was a ton of communication that went out on that. They really feel like it's a little too late for them to change course at this point. They think it's a really interesting, exciting idea. This is, what they submitted was for fall only, so there's some potential. I think they seem very open to that potential of doing that in the spring, but at this point, they feel like they cannot pivot quite to, they've already made contracts to buy the food because students are here, that they couldn't quite pivot to eliminate all of that and go with restaurants. So I think ultimately, it's a commission decision of whether or not you want to support the program as is, or, or not.
So before we maybe discuss that, I want to give us another option. And this is just some thought I had. We, we just keep not ignoring, but sort of bypassing the $200,000 that Douglas County took as a, as a cut. And, and, you know, when you think about this, some of these organizations that we, we're sort of unique in, in Douglas County and Lawrence, Sarah and I had a conversation about this, about we're, we do a lot of our work through community partners. You know, we could have created, and Douglas County could have created what we're asking DLI to do. And, you know, as Sarah said a couple of times, Douglas County is going to have to pay for those things that we took the $200,000 cut. I want us to think about maybe bringing that cut back, because we could do something like you're talking about with a whole lot more flexibility if we bring that 200, I mean, it will be more than 200,000, but it gives us flexibility, I guess, is my point. And I hate for us to, I just want us to think about that 200,000 that was there. The more I thought about it, the more I'm, I'm concerned that if we have any concerns about any of these programs that we're funding, and we're not funding Douglas County, but we're going to have to pay for some of that some way, somehow.
Back from where?
Well, I don't know. But, but I mean, that, I mean, one of the things I'm interested in where our delta ended up after all of this. And, and so as you're bringing that program up, I was just thinking.
I guess I just, I, I understand the, the, you know, the difficult process and the timing, and it's, it sounds as though the, before the plan was ever even finalized, the money is promised and spent.
I mean, clearly, yeah.
Unfortunate, and I'm, I have to think on that a little bit. So, and, and you make a good point, I, I've been wondering about that, cut to Douglas County funds as well. So why don't we pause on this conversation and hear the rest of, I mean, my, for me, it would be helpful to hear the rest of the plan.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
So Sarah, do you have more for us, or should we take public comment?
Oh, okay.
I'm, I don't really have much else for you at this point, unless there's some other questions to run through. I'm, I'm trying to, Brooke's working on some math for us to make sure that we've got that right, so it certainly would be a good time to take public comment.
Sarah, I had, I do have one question, it's kind of a lingering thought, and I, I don't remember if we really, you know, we, RSF 3 did such a phenomenal job of creating just, kind of just the right combination of programs that hit on all of, it seems like hit on all of the major needs. And the one big cut that was made internally was to the HEROES program, you know, helping the childcare facilities. Is that, is, I just want to make sure the sense of that is still almost $400,000 that that group is receiving for childcare providers to make it to the end of the year? Is, is, is there a sense that that's? Was there, was there a concern that they wouldn't be able to spend all 800, $900,000 requested? I mean, is there a sense that that will adequately cover our childcare providers to the end, just to the end of the year? Not to open up a major issue, but, but I want to, you know, my thought was if there was money left over, or did we shortchange that program at all, or is that?
Got no indication from that, from that group, but, um, you know, Robert and was probably a little bit more a part of those conversations than I was, so I don't know.
I just know that, and everybody, everybody's aware, and I, I mean, I think it's very generously funded, but certainly childcare, the ability to have open, safe childcare centers is just such an important part of this whole COVID moment, so. But you didn't hear from any concerned.
Not specifically on this.
And I, I didn't either, I was just kind of a lingering thought.
Yeah, I think it's a blend here of, we've got to have providers there to be able to use them. So, you know, I think there were, there's money in certain areas to support childcare, but unless we have providers, it's going to be difficult. I don't know, Robert, did, was there, do you have any additional information on that, those projects?
No, not really, they, there was no sense that they would not be able to spend it, really. Again, you know, like we talked the other day, it was just a, a matter of trying to bring it down. And the fact that it was a generous, you know, it's a generous ask, and, you know, not just in that one category, there's, there's two other categories that they're, you can fund in as well that were not cut, so.
Well, yeah, so that, I mean, that's, that was my question, there, it's a sector that's getting a really generous lot of funding from this, you know, from Round 1, from Douglas County. I just wanted to, if we did have money, you know, for instance, if the KU Dining money was not going to go to KU, you know, my thought was some of it could be stimulus, and if we need, if there was a sense that the childcare providers needed more, you know, but if the, if the sense is that the funding is adequate and actually pretty generous, then I'm, I'm good with that. That was just something that was a lingering thought when we were finished.
I do want to say, and Brooke reminded me of it, I'm going to share it again. I went over it quickly. We do currently stand at a $102,000 surplus. So this screen here at the bottom shows, oh, I'm so. Sorry, thank you. This screen at the bottom shows that we have $102,402 surplus. Currently, the commissioners identified additional cuts Wednesday than where we really needed to be, so we could go back and, and restore some cuts or allocate more.
Okay.
Well, maybe.
Well, that, that's a good topic, and there was one that I had, the childcare, because I think that's important, but there was one that I think kind of got lost in the shuffle, because it got put in RSF 1 by accident, was the Princeton, Princeton Children's Center. And so that's one I'd, I'd like to talk about possibly funding, because I, I think that they serve a. because I think that they serve a population that they could, they could definitely use the assistance. And whether we fund it fully or not is, you know, I don't know that we need to fund the wages, but maybe the PPE and some of the things they're requesting to help them during this difficult time with their low income and single parents.
I guess I assumed that they would be eligible for the Childcare Aware HEROES program.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that program. That's kind of like the umbrella program.
So it would just fall into that, so, okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure since it was sitting in the RSF1 that we didn't, didn't miss it.
I, that program will focus, will run like we just talked about with Downtown Lawrence Incorporated and LRA. My anticipation is that the Childcare Aware will make sure that is open to all county, to all county daycare centers.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? So this item is a regular agenda item, so we'll take public comment on it. If you are here in the courthouse, would you like to make public comment? Nobody here at the courthouse wants to make public comment. Sarah, if you could stop sharing your screen, that would be awesome. As much as I love looking at budgets and numbers, I'd rather see faces. So Jill, is there anyone who would like to provide public comment on Zoom?
Yes, I'm gonna move Leah Roslin over first. Leah, you're all set. Just unmute yourself, yep.
Hi, Leah.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Leah Roslin, and I'm a Lawrence resident in the Second County District and a MCKA graduate. I serve our community at the United Way of Douglas County, co-chair of the Douglas County Human Services Coalition, and also serve as an Equity Impact Advisor for RSF3. I'm joining this morning to ask the Commissioners to please seriously consider the racial impact of the policy decisions that you're making this morning as reflected in this budget. At the worker meeting on Wednesday, the 12th, Commissioner Thelman stated, "I think it's important we don't advantage one community over another." Commissioners, myself, the United Way, and the Impact Equity Advisors totally agree and appreciate Thelman's commitment to ensuring that these funds are not only made available through an equitable application process, but that the determination of awards drive a more equitable community. While Thelman's comments were in reference to equitable access to rural community members, I'd like to ask the Commissioners to consider the racial equity impact as well. To understand why the applicants were asked to complete an Equity Impact Assessment and why I'm here today asking the Commissioners not just to acknowledge, but to take action towards a more equitable community for our Black, Indigenous, and people of color friends and neighbors is clear through the qualitative and quantitative local data that we have on racial disparity. According to the Lawrence Douglas County Health Equity Report, the racial disparities in our counties start out at birth. In Douglas County, there's more than a twofold difference in the percent of Black babies born with low birth weight over every other race and ethnicity. Low birth weight infants are more at risk for many more health problems with both short and long-term effects. And poverty is a risk factor, but through decades of stories and quantitative data that research has generated, we know that racism is just as much of a factor. Provider unconscious and explicit biases impact care that our Black community members receive, and it results in negative health outcomes. This disparity in access to quality healthcare, coupled with chronic health, chronic stress and trauma as a member of a systemically oppressed group, means that unless we take decisive action, we are resolving to accept that our Black community members have twice the likelihood of starting out life with poor health. In Douglas County, the majority of Black children are living at or below the federal poverty level. 72.1% of African-American children pre-COVID lived at or below the federal poverty level as opposed to 11.5% of white children. The federal poverty level itself is so, is set so barbarically low, at $25,000 annually for a family of four, that the true number of our Black community members living at or below poverty is actually much higher. There's a phenomenon known as the Income Achievement Gap, which is a disparity in academic achievement between students from high-income families and low-income families. Students living in poverty are likely to start school already behind than their higher-income peers, and this starts early. This achievement gap exists in large part because of the toxic stress that the children are experiencing from hunger, homelessness, displacement, and the unhealthy home environment when parents themselves are stuck in a cycle of poverty and trauma that we have so far offered far few resources to negate. I want you to just sit for a moment and reflect on what it means when the vast majority of Black children in our community are living below the federal poverty level. If we were to think of health and financial security as a race we start at birth, how many yards or indeed miles behind are the majority of Black Douglas County residents starting? Through no fault of their own, these kids are already starting out at a disadvantage. Many BIPOC members of our community are stuck in a double bind of poverty and racism in a community that they don't feel cares for them. According to the Community Health Assessment, only white respondents felt that our county is inclusive for diverse communities. And I get it, as a community, we like to say all the right things. We're compassionate, we care about diversity and inclusion. But in action, we have done little to address the systemic virus of racism that has long been allowed to ravage our community. Kansas has the largest racial disparities in COVID-19 infections and deaths. While the Black population is 6% of our state, the Black community makes up 30% of all deaths in Kansas. These tragic and needless deaths not only impart more trauma and suffering upon a community already struggling to breathe, but it represents a loss for our whole community. I don't have time this morning and public comment to provide education on the myriad of historical and current systems toxins infecting our community with racist outcomes. I don't have time to provide education on utilizing an equity lens in policies decisions, or on confronting implicit bias, or on understanding the varying levels of the expression of racist oppression. I don't have time to show you the reports on the economic advantages of communities and businesses from embracing diversity. But all of these issues are critically necessary for our community leaders to understand so that we can take collective and decisive action against racism and towards equity. The Equity Impact Advisors submitted a proposal request that would do just that, prepare our community leaders to have the knowledge and tools for an equitable rebuilding so that we stop leaving people behind and demonstrate action behind our espoused values. This proposal, with the goal of cultivating the conditions for which race is not a determinant of one's outcomes in our community, was not advanced for funding consideration. I understand very well that there are so many priorities and not enough funds to fill all requests. But I also understand that there are thousands of dollars being considered for awards for Mass and other PPE that are perhaps duplicative, duplicative, accessible elsewhere, and for which more funding is being made available and other grant opportunities as the Commissioners have been discussing this morning. There are no other COVID-related funding sources or resources elsewhere in our community to bring this comprehensive racial justice training to address a just rebuilding. I would like you to consider, what message does it send when the Commission prioritizes perhaps duplicative requests for PPE and eliminates the singular proposal that would truly advance racial equity? The result of widespread racial equity trainings in our community would mean fewer Black babies being born at low birth weight, fewer Black children being born into poverty. It would mean better health and education outcomes for our whole community. And it would mean fewer needless deaths. It would mean a healthier economy, a more vibrant culture, and a community putting action into the words that Black lives matter. I would like to respectfully ask you to reconsider the Racial Impact Advisor Training Proposal for Inclusion so that we are rebuilding a thriving economy where all members have equitable opportunities to live, work, play, and indeed breathe. Thank you for your time this morning, Commissioners.
Leah, if you could stay on for just a second. I, we don't always ask questions, but I did have a couple of questions for you. Did you, I think you were one of the Equity Impact Advisors for one of the RSFs, is that right?
That's correct, RSF3 with Health and Human Services.
Yeah, can you, maybe for the public, because I don't know that everyone knows the Equity Impacts that were reviewed as part of each application. Can you go over the important work that you did there?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So with the Equity Impact Advisors Group, utilized an Equity Impact Assessment tool that all applicants were asked to complete as a, as a part of the proposal. And the Equity Impact Assessment is a way to have individuals and community groups start evaluating perhaps the unintended racial impact consequences of policy and budgetary decisions, and how that program or policy is advancing racial equity. The, the tool was utilized in, in an effort to have us begin considering the racial impact of policy decisions, but it is not sufficient. That was the beginning. It was just a start. That's not where it ends. We need to continue that work with comprehensive training so that people fully understand actually how to utilize that tool. Because the benefit of the tool comes in the knowledge of the people who are completing it and how they understand to be designing systems toward racial equity.
So in your mind, I mean, so every proposal that came out of RS3 did have that equity lens on it. And was there any, was there any of those coming out of yours that you felt didn't meet those equity goals?
I can just speak for RSF3, that the proposals that were ranked high, the body felt were at least not fostering disproportionate outcomes and could be a part of advancing racial equity. However, to my memory, no proposal specifically addressed disproportionate outcomes facing our Black, Indigenous, and people of color in this community. They were more widespread approaches that hope would catch everybody, including those with, that are suffering the most. But I didn't see any proposals specifically addressing lifting up and addressing those health disparities. There could have been in other RSFs. I only reviewed the proposal in Health and Human Services.
Commissioner Kelly, this is Jill Joliker, and I would just add that, you know, one of the things for, I know on a handful of the, the applications that we reviewed, if we felt that the Equity Impact Analysis hadn't been completed in full or needed some additional information, we pushed it back to them, to the applicant, and said, "You need to complete this and give us some more information before we can give it a rating or a recommendation," for what that's worth.
Thanks, Jill. Yeah.
Leah, thank you. I appreciate your comments this morning. This is Commissioner DeRusso. I mean, everything you said, I, you know, it's, it's really important. And I, I want to make sure that, that you understand that we were gonna, this is a discussion we were gonna have later on this morning, is about this, this program because we all believe it is a very important program. We just, I think it's something that's needed in general and not COVID-related. I, I think it's just a really important training that we have. And I, but I, I want to see it funded elsewhere, whether it's through the county or whether it's a joint effort with the city and the county. We all agree that it's very important, and we do want to move forward with it. It just, to me, didn't feel like it was a COVID-related issue. It is, it is a community issue. And so that, that's part of the reason it was polled, and it is going to be part of our discussion later today. And your comments this morning really, really helped emphasize the importance of it, so thank you.
Well, and so this is Commissioner Thelman. I think it's important to add to that. I would say it's, it's absolutely, the COVID relation to it is that we know that people of color are more impacted in this public health crisis. But our, we also talked at length, and I don't, maybe, I don't know if you listened to the very long meeting the other night, but we talked at length about the necessity of funding this particular study, but the risk we were taking of, all of the money had to be spent by December 31st of this year. And the time it takes to find a facilitator, to hire that person, to create the program, to create the public outreach and meetings, to finish the project and have spent all of the money by December 31st. Is that, is that going to maximize the impact of that very necessary study? Or do we want to, do we want to just do it, or do we want to do it right? And, and our preference was to do it right. And so look to ourselves to fund it, look to the city to partner with us if they would. But to make sure that that study was countywide, not just the city of Lawrence, and that it was done in a way that was applicable to this crisis we're in, but, but done in the depths and with the time necessary to get it done right. So in fact, I think we are trying to more honor your request rather than not honor it. I think we want to make sure this is done, but that it's done right. And it may take more funding than what you asked for. It will likely take more time than the few months that we have till the end of the year. So one of the limitations of the CARES Act is that the money has to be spent, and the program's done by December 31st. And it's possible that the state, if they see that kink in, in that particular proposal, they could take that out of our proposal, take that money away from Douglas County. And, and we would have lost that ability to invest elsewhere in programs we know they'll accept. So our intention, I mean, and we were going to discuss this at length before this meeting was finished, to make sure the community understood that taking that program out of this proposal was not evidence of our lack of caring or, or our lack of knowledge of the serious racial inequities we have. But they, we want to make sure that it is done well and done right and done fully. So I guess I just would ask you to stay on and listen to the rest of the meeting so you can hear the rest of the conversation.
Yeah, and this Commissioner Kelly, I would add that at first, thank you for all the work that you did as an Equity Advisor. And while I agree with you that it's not a perfect system, to my recollection, it's one of the first times that we ever used an equity lens on considering these proposals. So I wanted you to share that so that people understood. I take that Equity Impact, the Health, Equity, Equity Health Study very seriously. And I think I'm excited about a number of the programs, especially that came out of RS3 that I think will start to address some of those health equity disparities that we see across our community. I share with my Commissioners, I want to make sure, and I, I expect that you'll hold us accountable when we say we want to fund it throughout Douglas County, that we do that work, that we put that funding there. The one thing that I'll talk about a little later, and I would agree with Commissioner Thelman, we did put some money towards programs that the Equity Impact wasn't as strong. And I have some recommendations on some expectations when we think about these broad umbrella groups doing something similar equity-wise. You know, as we set up almost another program, another tier of this funding that ensures that equity is. that ensures that equity is being considered, that training is provided, and that we're being thoughtful about how our policies and our dollars are impacting equity across the community. So, I thank you for bringing it up. I think everyone on this commission is very supportive of the issues that you, well, we're not supportive of the issues, we're supportive of combating the issues that you bring up. And I encourage you to continue listening and holding us accountable to that.
Thank you for your time this morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the hard work that you have ahead and your service to our community.
Thanks, Leah. Do you have any other public comment?
And I just ask that you raise your hand if you want to make public comment.
Okay. Not seeing any. We'll bring back to our conversation. Thanks, Leah. Sarah, do you have a plan here, or do we want to sort of talk a little bit maybe about what we just talked about? I mean, that would be, we said we had more conversations to have, I don't know, or if you had other things you wanted to share with us?
I think related to the Equity Impact Training, you know, the conversation on Wednesday night, I think, was very important, and I'd encourage folks to go back and listen to that part and the commission's desire to, just logistic concerns of getting this all done in this calendar year and doing it right and doing it thoughtfully. So, from my perspective, what I'd like us to do is to have perhaps some additional work session or so where we could bring in folks that were the Equity Impact Advisors and have them talk to the commission about this proposal and their work through the COVID Recovery Team and how we can build on that as a community and what, how do we begin these sort of, the next steps into developing this program? And then, you know, let them refine cost estimates and training facilitators, and then perhaps prepare a proposal that could be considered by a number of bodies in Douglas County, City of Lawrence, us, United Way, other groups that might be interested in being participants in this process and being a part of that work. And so, I think those are some great next steps to continue to do that. I think we, you know, there's a number of folks that are ahead of us on this work. School districts have done tremendous work in this area. I think it'd be great to continue to learn from them. We heard a little bit about that about a year or so ago when we had our last joint city-county school board meeting and talked about that work. So, I fully think we should bring that back and since it was not funded in the CARES Act, I think a little bit of the impetus and the burden is on us to bring it back up and talk about how we continue to do this work in the community. Does that sound like a good approach?
I think that's a great approach. I suspect because there's some angst in the community about this, you know, apparent betrayal of our, you know, what looks like a betrayal of our intention to work on racial equity, you know. We are actually going to do that and then some, but I think the sooner we can get that study session scheduled, the better, so that we can really have this conversation fully. I think that's a great idea.
We have some overlap between our internal equity team and the equity advisors, and so I'll work with them to kind of identify some dates and some outlines as to how we want that work to come before the commission and who else needs to be at the table and how we want to move forward from that perspective. So, well, it's on my list and we'll make that happen.
Great, thank you.
Now, in terms of the rest of the, where we stand with the programs as currently funded, you know, like we said, we still have the KU dining proposal included in our funding amount, and we have a surplus of $100,000. I do appreciate Commissioner Kelly bringing up the cuts to our direct aid program. I'm certainly willing to walk through those. I did have a conversation if the commission wants to.
Oh, okay.
Or I did have a conversation yesterday with the courts administrator. They're working hard to try to get things ready to bring court back online. And I do feel like a number of those expenses are pretty urgent to happen for us. And, but I do fully anticipate that, you know, we do have sufficient reserves to accommodate those needs if needed. But, I mean, I anticipate we're going to spend that money. But I'm willing to review it with the commission if you want to. I know we had hoped to have a few more answers on long-term care. We don't have them at this point. We still have remaining, and Brooke will correct me if I'm wrong here, $125,000 in that program for long-term care. My hope is to find also a community organization that will help us work with directly with those nursing, assisted living, and retirement communities to help make sure they have the needed PPE that they need from that $125,000 that's remaining. So, there's another example of a place where we may be asking for a group to help us act as an intermediary and administrator in that process. It's currently sitting under our direct aid plan, just because I didn't, I don't have that group identified today.
Well, I think, I think a really big one for us to figure out is the KU dining $450,000, you know, almost half a million dollars. So, Sarah, can you explain again what's already been committed by KU? And maybe what other rounds of, I mean, I know we don't know precisely, but what other rounds of funding will be coming KU's way?
So, we included in our follow-up documentation for the 812 meeting, and I'm gonna pull it up. Trying to find it. I'll just put it up on the screen so that folks listening can see what we're talking about. Oh, here we go. Okay. So, this should be coming up here. There we go. So, we'd asked the University of Kansas to follow up on various Spark and CARES Act CRF-based funding they've received in the past and what they prepare for. They, their Spark 2 request, which will be what we would call Round 2, was part of a joint Kansas Board of Region Systems request. As such, KU was unable to include all the expenses related to reopening responding to COVID-19. It was still made while they were developing their fall semester plan. The things that they submitted to us in their Round 1 and our Round 1 plan were either discovered after or not part of that Spark 2 request that they put forward. So, I believe there's really no duplication of funding. The question just becomes, is this something the county is interested in including in its Round 1 direct aid plan? I did mention that they had some CARES Act funding that came directly from the federal government. They received CARES Act, G E R, so GEAR funding from the state of Kansas and Governor Kelly. That was $26 million in funding. And, but then the state cut their budget by $26 million. So, it really was a net, no net gain. And that they are hopeful for future federal funding in hopefully a CARES Act Round 4, but I do believe Congress has gone home. And we don't have a lot of forward momentum on that project, on that federal legislation. And for folks that are interested, this is included in our packet for 812. So, so I can, I think I've gone past it. So, I can show you what we currently have in for funding for them, if you'd like to see that.
Yeah.
We did make some base reductions before that program ever came to the commission. So many spreadsheets. All right. There you go. All right. This is our all programs combined spreadsheet, and particularly RSF4 for education. There was a request for KU for PPE. I kind of highlight these as we go here. For $200,000, $107,000 for plexiglass barriers. On Wednesday, the commission removed the campus cupboard project that was really paid for staffing for their food pantry. Just given the amount of time here that we're talking about, four months of staffing, you know, we're not, they will still continue to receive food, and hopefully they'll be able to identify volunteers, which is how the program's been managed in the past. There was a request for $102,000 for building operations. And then, and then I'm going to skip over the dining support request and go to the health monitoring app of $309,000. I know the university has already, you know, meant, I think all of these projects are things the university has already committed to in an attempt to try to get ready for fall. And the question just is, is if there is any sort of ability for us to help reimburse that funding? If not, I think they just try to figure out how they pay for it on their own. On the dining support, it is specifically for scholarship halls and the decision that was made to not have scholarship halls use communal kitchens and to ask to then instead allow them to use the KU dining program. So, that's what the request was for, was to help offset, there was a delta between what they used to spend on food for those communal kitchens that was prepared by the residents to now the cost of the KU dining plan program for the university.
Sarah, can you just scroll down real quick?
Yep.
On the proposed budget.
We didn't get a lot of detail.
Yeah.
So, there's 843 students? Is that what it said?
I believe so. It's $843 per meal plan.
Oh, and 500 and?
580 students at 843. It's like 488,000 or something.
I got 428, but yeah. So, there's some administration in there, is what I thought there.
Yeah, I assume so.
I just have to say, I really liked Commissioner Thelman's ideas. One of my priorities in this was collaborative ideas that, and I'm not saying that those who are doing food service for KU are not Douglas County residents. They certainly are. But I really liked the collaborative idea that Commissioner Thelman came up with.
And so, at this point, is the argument is this money has already been put on the students' dining cards? And, or that, I guess I just, I guess I'm disappointed that everyone, well, I I think it's a tremendous lost opportunity, and I'm not, I'm, you know, not having been part of yesterday's conversation with the folks at the KU, I guess it's, you know, I can understand the difficulty of everything. Everything is difficult and complicated right now, and to have a simple solution to an unexpected problem makes their life easier for sure.
And I do want to say in my conversations with Julie Murray in the chancellor's office, I mean, they were very open to this idea for the future, for additional conversations. They just felt like at this late hour, to them, students are already here, already eating. You know, that it was a little too late to try to create a whole program at this hour, and they'd already, and they had, and they already, you know, they already communicated this change to students. And I'm just telling you what she told me.
Right.
Yeah, but they're gonna be eating for months ahead.
Right.
There's time to.
I was a scholarship hall student, so, you know, for one, I'm not sure they're all gonna use the dining plan the same way that the university thinks they will. But also, we've asked our community to be flexible in a number of different ways. We went to organizations and said, "Hey, we'd like you to actually stand up an entire retail economic development arm. Do you mind if you do that?" And I just, I feel like this wasn't a huge ask, and I'm just disappointed that, and I don't, I don't run the food service program at KU, and I don't pretend to be in the weeds, but it does, does impact, I think, my consideration, I guess.
Was this three meals a day? Is this breakfast, lunch, and dinner? How do you know?
I assume that they get a dining meal plan.
So, it's just like any other student, they have access, I mean, I can see their point. I mean, the student's already there, and they're already eating. They're already part of this program. And I, well, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I don't think there was even time to get with Lawrence businesses and try to line up somebody that can do 580 meals three times a day.
Well, that, I mean, they've essentially done that when they did the bagged contact lunches, when, you know, that school feeding program. They've run a program like this before. So, they're, they are stood up and ready to do it, and it would be money that would be shared. It would be restaurants taking, they've done this before. It would just be boxed meals delivered.
Logistics between the university and those organizations and how they're going to be delivered and where they're going to be delivered. I mean, logistically, you just need time to figure those things out. They can't, can't be done in 48 hours, especially, you know, when you're dealing with a university.
Is it, do you think it would be, I mean, I get that. I get that, and I, no one needs.
It's a great idea.
No one needs one more headache, but I also think, you know, we know for sure that millions and millions and millions of dollars are coming KU's way, but the needs right now are extraordinary locally. So, I wonder if we can have some kind of a compromise where we partially fund KU dining halls, so the kids they have right now with money on their dining cards, you know, so that's not interrupted, but that we, you know, there are several months to get through. I wonder if, if, if we could allow for, you know, $150,000 for their costs right now to get the kids through the next month or so in the skull halls, and that would give time to create the $300,000 stimulus program so that both, both ends of this win. I mean, I I mean, I.
I I'm fine reducing, reducing it and and providing something. I I don't have a problem with that, I I was just trying to, you know. Share the other side of it.
Oh, sure.
Logistically, it's, it's not as easy as it sounds, especially when you're dealing with a state university. And and college kids, you know, college kids, they've already checked into their rooms and they've gotten your little piece of paper that says. This is how you're going to be fed and. It probably went in the trash can and that's the last they're going to think about how they're going to get fed.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a downside to the students, you know, receiving fresh local food from, you know, from restaurants versus going to the dining hall for the same, you know, good food. But but, you know, I don't know that the students would be unhappy with this option, I think it's just. Logistically, it's some work to do, but I, you know.
And there is three meals a day, so it's, I think there is some complexity that would have to be worked out, could they. Use dining hall plan for breakfast and lunch and then this is something that comes for dinner, but.
Exactly, and that, I mean, I think that that, I, we have restaurants who do all three meals, I don't, I don't think this would. Necessarily be intended to be an every meal, every, every day stimulus program, I, you know, I guess what I envisioned was. You know. Either the lunch or the dinner, one or the other, I mean, I think they could, I think the folks in the restaurant industry are happy to to create whatever program. Would work, I just think it's a shame for lack of some imagination and a little bit of effort to. You know. Every, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, every evening, you get your bagged. Dinner from a great local restaurant rather than another meal at the dining hall and that way you've. You know. Gotten some great food to the students, but you've also helped your restaurants stay open. And help them keep their people employed and help keep the local producers who. Count on them for, you know. For ordering local food, I mean, it's just. The the different levels of economic recovery that happen with this kind of program are. Are important. And.
So.
I, I, like I said, I think it's a great idea, I just don't think there was enough time to. To allow anybody to set up. What the program would look like, especially considering students are already here and eating.
And and let's, let's not put our restaurants in a spot here, so I'm just doing some. Back of the napkin math type here, and when you look at the number of students for the number of weeks for the number of meals. I mean, it's working out to be about three dollars a meal and those, that economic recovery. Proposal we have from LRA is fifteen dollars a meal, so I don't want to set up. LRA for for a program that's going to be much more expensive to implement than we're giving dollars to KU to do, so. I just want to think about that a little bit before we jump into. You know, I would want. I would want to hear from LRA on in that group, what they would be able to do for how much, because I don't think this would cover for the number of kids we're talking about here and the number of times, I mean, since it's one meal a day. If you're doing one meal and if you say we just do dinner and we cut it by a third, and I'm not saying the dinner costs as much as lunch and breakfast, let's make sure that's clear, but. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for five hundred kids for dinner for twenty weeks. That's a tricky number to me. I tried to feed them for that.
And again, and I, I do, and I, the logistics of trying to do this today.
Right.
Getting this decided today, I think ultimately the commission needs to make a decision on if they want to fund the feeding program or not.
Right.
And then what do you want to do if you decide not to feed it? What do you want to to do with those funds, you could just say partially fund a community based feeding program. And but then give it some time to put that structure together, if that's something the commission wants to do.
I would advocate that we, I don't think we can create a new program from scratch with the two partners here before we turn something in. I sort of feel like we can partially fund them because they've already committed some dollars to it. That a little bit. You know, they got to feed those kids somehow and as Commissioner Thelman said, this may be a. An convenient solution to a tricky problem, but. I I don't mind funding it less because I think. I'm really, I'm, I'll just say it again, I'm really worried about Douglas County and being able to do all the things we're trying to do. You know, I don't think the public always understands all the things that Douglas County funds. That is the infrastructure of this community and, you know, we. I appreciate Sarah taking that, but I know she's going to have to find the money somehow, some way, and that's going to mean that we'll be able to do less things. And give us less flexibility down the road.
Well, I, I mean, I. I I think I probably said all I can say in terms of the value of of. Being more creative when when we have massive amounts of money going toward basically. Whoops. The kind of. Easy, but not necessarily best. Most economically stimulative way we could do, sorry, we could do this project, but I, but I get that that this is a late hour to try to do something creative. I, you know. I would love to think that. In the next round, in the next opportunity, when there. When there is the opportunity for some creativity that that could actually help the entire economy and not just. Not just the kind of corporate food system that they're relying on, that that they would. Remember a pretty substantial bit of funding from Douglas County that maybe we could the next time work a little harder to be creative on a program, so. But I also, I I agree with Commissioner Kelly that maybe. As we look to the two hundred thousand dollars that we've cut from our own budget, maybe some of that can be. Rescued from this, but I, but partially funding them. So they don't have any huge surprises and especially at the beginning of the semester, I think is reasonable.
So do, is it.
So Sarah, we had a, sorry.
No.
So we had a delta of a, I hate to call it a surplus, but we had a. An additional hundred thousand, what did you say again?
We, we currently have an unallocated amount, which is what I'd call it right now.
Thank you.
Two thousand four hundred and two dollars. One oh two, four oh two.
So if we reduce this amount by a hundred thousand, say. And we had that other unallocated unless there was anything else that anybody was really thinking. Boy, we we missed the boat on this, we could. We could bridge that gap and we'd be pretty close, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
So, okay, I think that sounds like a, what would probably be a good plan is to just. To restore the Douglas County cut of two hundred or three hundred, so keep just our county cut, but then maintain the reduction in long term care. Which I think is okay, I think we can make that work.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all in the same pot, I mean, yeah, I mean, it gives us flexibility, which is what we're after, I think there, right?
So Brooke, do you? I would, I would then reduce the amount of the KU dining. Sorry. The KU dining proposal by the amount. It sort of be probably just like ninety eight thousand dollars ish. To. Restore the reduction of two hundred thousand dollars that we took coming into. The meeting. On Wednesday.
Or or we could just reduce it by a hundred thousand and put that into Douglas County.
Okay.
You see, I mean.
Okay.
So that we've got the wacky number and.
Okay.
I see what you're saying.
Say that again one more time, Commissioner, I want to make sure I've got that right.
So if you just, if you took their request down to three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
And put a hundred thousand plus whatever are delta, just going back, so it's a little over two hundred thousand that's going back.
Yeah.
Then we have sort of the remaining number.
Right. Brooke, does that make sense?
Brooke's given up at this point.
Can you hear us? Okay, yeah, so I guess what I'd like you to do, Brooke, if you wanted to was, can you make, I'll get out of those spreadsheets and if you could make that adjustment. Might be nice to be able to throw that back up on our screen so commissioners could see it before we wrap up. This conversation. Does that make sense? Do you want to see it or do you just want to sort of trust us to get that part done?
I trust you.
Okay, I thought we could take a quick break or.
Yeah, we want to take a quick five minute break and then.
Yeah.
Have something to vote on. Are we there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Brooke looks like she's doing the work.
Yeah, I've, I've made the adjustments, so I removed the two hundred thousand dollar reduction for Douglas County. And then commissioners, I adjusted the. The dining down to. Three fifty and now we're sitting at a two thousand four hundred and two dollar surplus.
So I, I think the commissioner's goal there, Brooke, would be to. Then further restore the hundred thousand dollar cut onto the county plan for long term care.
Okay.
By that two thousand dollars.
Okay.
So we have a nice even number and.
Can I? Go ahead. Put one little asterisk on this, not to change numbers, but to go back to to the. Topic of. If KU is genuinely interested in the idea of the stimulus program to, so that some of their. Food dollars go to help our local. Food producers and restaurants and all of that, and I would expect that they will have the same gap, the same issue will hold for the skull halls in the spring. So they will have to, they will have to find funding for that same. Gap in. You know, I would think this would be a repeated. Episode.
And I don't have any CARES Act money.
No, I know, I know, I I'm saying that one other, I mean, I'm just going to be a pest on this, one stipulation of this funding. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they've already committed that we hadn't committed yet. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If there's future funding for that gap in their skull hall dining program. That they would, this, this money is conditional on their willingness to work with us to find a way to. Take those. Future federal dollars and. And.
Well, and I.
Toward a stimulus.
I I'm going to say right now that I'm not comfortable putting stipulations or conditions on this money, one. Even though we're making the decisions. This is money for the county, it's not Douglas County taxpayer money. I I think we either give someone the the money for the, with the state is determined is eligible. And beyond that, I I don't think it's our place to put stipulations on it to say we want. Intern for this, we want you to help our our restaurants in the future. Nothing against our restaurants, but I, we're not doing that for anybody else, I, I just am not comfortable with it.
Yeah, it's pretty seductive to me to put a lot of my aspirations on this money, but. And not just KU food service, but I can think of a lot of different things I'd like to see happen in the community that we could tie to this money and I just. I want to be cautious of going down that road. I s, I I felt like, and even I was sort of recommending that a little bit with the DLI money and the LRA money and I don't. So I can see why we want to do that, but I think it's sort of a sticky place to be, I'd rather say. Maybe we need to have a, some time with. KU housing. And LRA and just see what possibilities might emerge from that discussion rather than tie it to the dollars.
Well, fair enough, I just had to throw it out there, just one, just one last, one last ditch effort and I, I hope. I hope they mean it when they say they think it's an interesting concept and maybe something to pursue. That timing was the issue and not lack of willingness to. Work collaboratively on on an idea like that, because I, I think it's valuable for them, I think the students would actually appreciate. Free access to some, you know, non-KU dining hall food. And I think it's kind of meets an awful lot of needs. Beyond. Convenient dining, so I, so I hope that, I hope that we can keep that conversation going and I will. I will take back my suggestion, it was just. Yeah, I've been.
And maybe it will lead to other collaborative activities, I mean, I can think of childcare to be something that we should be collaborating with the university and the county on, I can think of. Education, you know, we didn't see much work across our education sectors, you know, could they have. Helped us with online curriculum as they're developing, I mean, I can think of a lot of things. And maybe this is. This is that crack in the ice that will help us be even more collaborative.
I hope so. Okay, so we've made the adjustments. What I, my plan to do then would be to work with Brooke to make sure we've got everything aligned so that she can begin. The hard, hard work of submitting this all to the state and then seeing their. That how they feel about our plan. I would then, what I would recommend is that staff would republish sort of the summary spreadsheets of how each RSF is broken out. And each direct aid plan, probably not. Not republish every. Program because we've made some significant modifications to those, they do stand in our record from eight twelve. But then put that on our website associated with this meeting so that. Folks can come back and review that as to what those changes were made and the commission would have that as well. And then we get started on getting this. Uploaded to the state.
We need a motion here, don't we, Sarah?
We need a motion to recommend Douglas County's. Round one CARES Act program. Brooke, is that, do you feel like that would be a sufficient motion as, as outlined?
Yes, I think so.
That would be my motion, what Sarah just said. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 I want to, before, before everyone leaves, you know, I want to just say again. This was probably one of the most challenging things I've done in twenty years in local government. With less than thirty days to come up with a twenty five million dollar plan to serve over. I mean, I think we're up to well over fifty community based organizations to distribute. Over twenty five million dollars to our community with over. Probably still, we're still probably well over two hundred and forty individual distinct programs that we're going to all try to get accomplished this year. This has been a monumental task for our staff, everyone else I talked to in counties, when I tell them about how. How, how much outreach we did, how mu, how broad we tried to keep our reach on this program and that we did it all ourselves without hiring a consultant. To manage this process for us, they just don't believe me. I, and and I've talked to large counties in terms of how they're trying to manage this process, so I'm incredibly grateful for our team. That has worked so hard to pull this together and that is not just the Douglas County staff, but the entire recovery team, so. The representation from Dr. Gerard at the university to Bonnie Lou at the chamber to city manager. And to Dr. Lewis at the school district to to Russ Johnson at LMH and to Dan Partridge and each of those RSF advisors. We totally dropped this on them and said, this is going to be your life for the next thirty days to help, help our community come up with these plans. They did not sign on for that, but they have done a ton of extra work, engaging a ton of people in our community. I'm hopeful that that really continues to strengthen our bonds of collaboration throughout all of these sectors. But it is, but it is, it has been a monumental task and and we still, we're not done, we. We got to see if the program's approved and then we have a lot of work to institute agreements and and then get this money spent. And then really focus then on round two and the exciting opportunities in round two. Commissioners, I believe in your, your information for, we uploaded it, Brooke, for the eight twelve meeting. What we are learning right now is available for. For round two, I would like to bring it back to you next week during our commission meeting to just really focus on it of what's open. There's a lot of, our staff is going to continue to stay engaged in those webinars and conversations, so I think the more we can promote. I think the more we can promote and, and really try to encourage our community to be active in our applications, I think the better off we are. And I know I've had conversations that really looks like round two is really designed for individual businesses. So, you know, my conversation with Emily Peterson with Lawrence Restaurant Association, this will be really work well because this is a group organi, you know, a group process. And then individual restaurants can apply to the state for, for their individual activities. They have a very small PPE program that's super simple to apply for. And so I highly encourage folks to not be too intimidated because it's a state-based system. That I think they really are trying to make it easy for folks to get that information out. But thank you for your time and attention to this effort and, and to everyone involved in this process.
Question about how this moves forward with the, the group funding that we have. Will there be an opportunity that we can have a discussion and you can share with us, like whatever type of contractor agreement you're gonna have with say, DLI or LRA or whoever about how these funds are spent and eligibility and priorities or basically whatever is gonna be communicated to them. And then we'll, we'll, you know, the process by which will they be submitting something to you to say this is who we're going to, we plan to fund or, and what they plan to, I just want to know what the process is gonna look like.
Sure.
And I don't want to drag that out this morning, but next week or the following Wednesday, if maybe we could have that on our agenda to kind of, so we understand and-
Implementation.
Yeah. So I want to give each of them a little bit of time, particularly like with downtown Lawrence, they just found out they got all this extra money. So it may not be next week, it might be the week after for them to develop a program outline for how their program would work with a little more detail than what we're submitting to the state. Send that to the commission for your, for, just to make sure it's consistent with your vision for how these funds are administered and distributed to the community. But then I would really anticipate that we should let them run that program and, and not necessarily bring back their individual recommendations for approval. And so I think we, we-
Yeah, I don't really mean for approval. I just, I just mean for,
Yeah.
So we can see how-
Yeah. And they may have questions for us. I, I do think that they'll have some questions like, what do you mean here? Is this sufficient? And so I think once we sort of bless, you know, I hate to use that word, but to approve or review their program outline, then they can go forth, you know, get that word out to the community and they can run that process. And then we will work behind the scenes with them to provide them with funds at once and to make sure the, the money flows quickly. We will be able to have all these dollars leveraged here locally. So it's not like we have to ask the state every time we want to make a, a distribution. So I think that's really helpful too, to really move the money out to the community quickly. And then they will have, we will have a contact with each of those organizations with Brooke, who will be then submitting the documentation for the state to make sure that we have our full documentation of what we need because ultimately the county is responsible for the stewardship of these funds. But so that we have what we need to be able to meet that documentation. Does that help?
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And that, you know, there's no question come December 30th or something that funds weren't spent correctly or funds weren't spent at all or anything like that. So I just want to, once you guys have it in place, the implementation, the process, the distribution, all, all that, I'm just gonna be curious how,
And I think-
how it works and what kind of, because this is gonna be new to them too.
Absolutely.
I mean, nobody's ever had to do anything like this. So I don't want anybody to be overwhelmed or overburdened. Or to kind of, when somebody asks a question, I don't want them making up the rules as they go. I want to make sure that that communication's there and-
Yeah, and this is more than just, I think, the Lawrence Restaurant Association, the DLI program, the Child Care Ware program. I know we want to make sure that we have how, you know, some details behind that program and how it's gonna be distributed to the community. I think there's pockets of that. When we figure out how we're gonna do long-term care, we'll bring that back to you so that you will see how that program goes. So I, I, you're gonna continue to see the impact of these dollars throughout our community for the rest of this year. And we'll be bringing back things too at a number of stages.
Okay.
Thanks. I think one thing that would be helpful for people to hear beyond the, beyond the details of that, but like today, it's important to say because we've passed this doesn't mean the money is available to be allocated tomorrow. This is gonna go to the state. The state is going to say yes or no. There might be some adjustments to be made and, but the approval of this plan isn't, doesn't come back to us until-
At the earliest, it will come back to us September 15th. And I would say that that is the earliest.
These groups will be working on their processes, but the actual money is not even available to be spent until after mid-September. So no one should expect that there is money on its way. Well, I mean, I think that's a serious point that people need to understand. This has been a, you know, incredibly difficult process to get things done quickly. And then now that it feels like we're done, we're not really done yet. The money isn't gonna be here for another month at the soonest.
Correct.
Or the ability to spend it.
Correct.
So people are gonna have to hang in there a little while longer, knowing, knowing that help hopefully is on the way, but it's not on the way tomorrow.
Yeah, that is a great point. This is not the final approval. The final approval lies with the state and so.
And, and correct. And they may come back and say, we don't like this particular program and, or say that they deem it's ineligible. I, I think is probably what they would say is that, you know, this looks like you're gonna spend into 2021. And then they will let us know that. And then at that point, we can decide, we will, we will have one opportunity there to modify our plan.
We need to do some honorable mentions.
Yeah, I, let me, let's get this in and then I think you guys could talk about what you want as your honorable mention if something is struck. And so I feel pretty confident that what we have here are all very eligible programs. But, but, but you certainly can be thinking about if we did, if that did happen, what would, how would we want, what would we want to put in there? And that's the hard part about where we stand here is that, you know, they've told us we, we can amend the plan really only if there's like an emergency. You know, a need to set up a field hospital, for example. Then we would go into this program and say, sorry, organization X, you thought you had all this money, now you don't. Now we have to set up a field hospital. But it's not gonna be like, oh, I got more money from round two. Can I move things around? We don't believe we have that kind of flexibility once we create the plan.
Well, thank you. And Brooke's still on. And thank you, Brooke. This is a huge task. I mean, it's just, and thank you to the community. I mean, the number of RSF partners, I talked to a number of them yesterday. And just thank you for all that work. I mean, that's, that's what makes Douglas County great is so many stepping up. I do think we need to be, I, I was chuckling because I was just thinking of Brooke sitting there with a pile of checks waiting, you know, for people to stop by the courthouse to pick them up, you know? She was just waiting to print them. But I mean, this is gonna be a huge task just to implement these budget dollars. We have some groups that have formed to do this. And I think, I just think about the administrative work and the understandings that are gonna, that's gonna put a strain on Douglas County because when they don't know what to do, they're gonna come back to us and say, how do we do this? So I appreciate the work you've done and the work you're about to do once this gets approved. So.
Spreadsheets that have to be completed is documentation on this or, I mean, they're detailed, you know, they're detailed.
Okay, we do have general public comment on our agenda. Jill, is there anyone online who would like to provide general public comment?
I'm not seeing anyone, but again, a reminder, if you want to make public comment to, please use the raise your hand function. Not looking like it.
Thank you, Jill. And we have one brave soldier. Thank you for being here with us through all this. If you want to make public comment. Thanks, Rick. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, if there is nothing else, then I can, we're adjourned.